All the council meeting to order apologies. I thought when I looked at the agenda, it said it was at the library instead of here. So I've been running around here to get here. So apologies for that. I also am trying to get to the agenda here. So we start out with the call. Thank you. Called to order. And so we are joined with Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Schultz, Councilmember Friesick today. And I believe that Councilmember Dominguez is joining us by Zoom tonight. So first off, is there approval, a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second thing? It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we will have a consent vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is approved. There is a, the councilmen and meeting minutes are there. The treasurer's report as well as the city clerk's report. There is a very lengthy June sewer report that's done cheap with that. And then there is the approval of the tobacco license for our local businesses. So is there any discussion questions on any of those reports that have been submitted? All right, we have a new officer to the police department. And so we want to welcome Zachary Murdock to the West Liberty Police Department. And I think that he has joined with his family here today as well as Chief Howser. And that we need to administer the old bottles to him. He's suing. All right, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I Zachary Murdock do solemnly swear.
I Zachary Murdock do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as a police officer.
Discharge.
All duties.
All duties as a police officer.
Of the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
The city of West Liberty, Iowa.
And now or forever required by law.
As now or hereafter reported by.
Hereafter. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Believe it or not, it's such a focus on this little man.
Do you want to focus with your generally? You choose.
I didn't hear it. One, two, three, change.
All right, next up. Some of you may remember something that I wrote in a column a while back. And I wrote about a friend of mine, Erma- Erma Lee Ranta. And Erma Lee was a baby in Helsinki, Finland on December 1st, 1939. And her mother had just put her to bed in her crib when Soviet planes flew over Helsinki and bombs were dropped all over the city. One of the bombs came down through the building that Erma Lee, baby Erma Lee was living in. And her crib and her were shattered with glass. The bomb went on down through the building, hit the basement and did not detonate. Which is very fortunate that that didn't happen. So fast forward several years, Erma Lee's grandson and granddaughter-in-law, Yurki and Susanna Ranta, were stationed in New York City for three years when he was working for Nordia Bank. And Ally, my daughter, and I were there one day shortly after Thanksgiving when they received a package in the mail and it contained their daughter Anika's United States passport in the mail that day. And to see the looks on their faces, having grown up in a country like Finland, next to the Soviet Union and Russia. And the fear that they had lived with all their lives. You could see the relief that they saw on their faces because their daughter was now a United States citizen. I think that that's something that we as citizens of this great country often take for granted. And so as we live and work and participate in this community of West Liberty, we know that there are many citizens or many people of this community who are trying to gain citizenship. And one of the things I'd like to do as mayor, and know that the council likes this as well, is to honor folks who have received their United States citizenship. And we want to recognize three people tonight. One, Esmeralda Garza has moved away from our community and I don't think is here tonight. But we have two people who are and will be mailing a certificate to Esmeralda as well. So we have Hector Sanchez here and Diana A. Rera. Repeat on it for. Ranta. Yeah, here. So if you would stand up, we'd like to honor your certificates. Oh, she said, oh, okay. So are you taking the certificate for her?
I mean, she's my cousin.
We'll do that. So.
What does my dad think about that? Yeah, four family members.
Oh, great. I didn't realize I could remember the same fact. So we have the certificate for Hector on gaining citizenship. They're very proud of you, but yeah, working with people gaining their citizenship, I know it's not easy.
After just, after just training.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's another major. Yeah, so congratulations. We're very proud of you. Welcome you to the citizenship of the United States. All right, next up are reports from city employees, city managers, county attorney, our city attorney, county boards and commissions, or city boards and commissions. So first up is city engineer Leo Holy.
So there's a couple of things that are on your agenda tonight. One would be Rainbow Street. So I'll, I'll save that one for then. And then Columbus Street sidewalk has something on there also, so we won't have to hit that one. The things that I would like to hit as well, number two, we've been waiting on the integration into the, into the water plant SCADA system. And from what I understand, all the parts and pieces are finally here and they are in that process. There is an issue with getting the flow into the water plant because they didn't, they do not have a real good way to blow off or to drain water before it gets to the water plant. Danny has a way to do it through a, like a hose, but that's really not right, not the way it's done. So that's another part that we're going to come back to you as not part of this project. Northway, they're a well drilling company. They're not one to put in a fire hydrant or anything like that. So we're getting a couple of quotes and then come back to you about. On the roof part of that, that's also on your agenda. So I'll wait till then. The roof is separate from the wells still. And then the wastewater treatment plant, the phase, we broke it into a phase one a design and then phase two is kind of getting into the final zone. We wanted to wait until we met with West Liberty Foods and kind of go through their finance stuff. And then we, he and I kind of broke up what we thought would be a good way to split up things. We wanted to run that all by them. We haven't done it yet. Unfortunately, the process engineer that really is the main guy on this project just got his shoulder replaced yesterday. So he's going to be down and out for another week or two before we can even have that meeting. And I think we should wait for that. So I told you I was going to schedule it. I haven't yet. There's no sites. You knew that, but dominant. Yes, sir. What's that? Mark Sykes is now not doing it? He's getting his complete shoulder. I guess that's a tremendous surgery. It is. I've never heard of it, but they say it's something you do not want to have done. Mark was a, I think a big 12 basketball player back in his day. And I don't think that was good for your body when you get being old. Anyway, so I just wanted to give you a heads up. That's all I had to mention.
Thank you. Any questions for the city engineer?
Just a comment on that. They did, I did talk to. I talked to automatic systems. They should be here this week. Do the integration.
Awesome.
So then we're just waiting on the hydrant.
I just wanted to give another quick update. So Leo and I have been working together. We've had some discussion and we are setting a meeting for our superintendent staff for us to have a sit down and have a conversation about our communication. The previous years, our superintendents have not been as involved as we, we have them now with things. And likewise, Leo's got some multiple layers with these projects. So we have worked and we are looking at setting every third Friday of the month to have a meeting to continue to build and work through communications and information to keep everybody, you know, in the loop and work out things that, you know, we may be running into that we're not getting or just again, learning to work together and build that communication. So.
It will help a lot. Like, like, a lot of time the contractors, especially somebody that named Northway that does work with him, he talks directly to him. We have to try to figure out what are they telling him versus what are they going to tell them else? That type of thing. And then, and even they, sometimes Northway doesn't want to get in the middle of that. They have a sub jet though that talks directly to him. And so they don't even know sometimes. So there is a lot of communication that needs to happen. We need to do better at it because in the past we kind of didn't have as much we had in business. And now I think the standing meeting every night will make it a bit more hard.
We've seen the success with it with West Liberty Foods. But even in our internal, you know, we, we work on that. And so we will, we will keep you, Leo and I'll keep you updated on that as we pursue.
I will say to our guests that we honored tonight that you don't have to stay for the rest of the council meeting if you don't want to. And I know that there's a little one in here who probably has a bit of. They're not in any way.
You don't want to stay all night?
Well, they're citizens. They can run for council. So they may want to stay and see how it works.
I want to. Okay. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. So we also have on the list, the water treatment plant and the water sewer. So are there any things that the two of you would like to add here?
I would just say, actually, we've got a rotary screen out of service right now. That basically is automatic type screens. So basically putting a manual screen, it's pressed inside. So we're going to have to even have that service onsite and possibly kind of be shutting the door. Take a summary of this. I'm actually looking at somebody to try and be able to do it. It's actually onsite outside. That's one of the big things that we've got going on right now.
Question without benefit? Anything more to add?
Just that, Craig, we have a meeting this Friday. Looks like it's rescheduled at 11:00 AM.
I didn't understand in the report about E. coli, if you'd expand it.
On the E. coli testing?
Yeah. Basically, they test the ethyl that we have running through the plant. And it goes by basically two units that basically run UV through it, UV light. Go, but it runs through tubes and by UV light basically disables all the organisms that go through that plant. Okay. And you have to be below 457. After your five staff, as I said again. It'll be under the weather. That's that.
Nothing else on that going to committee meetings?
We did have.
Thank you. Shook has said no.
Okay.
They don't have any.
For being here. You know, Oliver, the president said they had a little thing to talk about. This is being still the same justice where they're cleaning up.
Yes.
And she had a question. I don't know if we update you.
Yeah, I shared it, reach out in their word backups. We're trying to resolve. They did not have to do with.
There's, in our packet, there's some information on reimbursement to a homeowner who had backup.
That is separate.
That's separate from what you're talking about.
For the DNR stuff, yeah. And that was just, there was a backup in the morning. It was after the bypass and the flooding. I don't know if it necessarily had to do with that, but we had a, a main blast after the floodings, which probably last because of the flood. But then we had backup because of that, which led to backups in the basements. Yeah, those are all, those are on the lower tier of reportable to the DNR, but they're still. If there's a, they actually put it in two or three years ago. That basement, that is part of a, a DNR board. Somebody didn't know about that actually a couple of years. But.
They, they make Musketon County a because of the weather you had, that they're making a.
Federal and state last quarter.
It's sometimes there's not a lot of money associated with those, but it's probably worth calling. Cheryl Tomb and that group over there. Good morning.
We have completed the final process on the FEMA. And as of right now, our communication was is that when the county met the the federal assistance and, and so our superintendents have spent quite a bit of time with their, their damages and and they've just moved, they just sent an email and asked for another set of dates and damages. So it's again, I mean, it, it is a lot of administrative work in order to receive the reimbursement, but with the budget at our size and the tree removal and the debris and the damages, it, it's certainly going to be worth that administrative work to, to try to replace.
Two sides to the state FEMA, the one that she's talking about is extraordinarily difficult. I never have to deal with it. They do, but I know every city I work with complains unbelievably bad about how difficult it is to deal with. The other side is their preparedness and things you can do. We've gotten generators in the past. They always say you can get pumps, but it's hard to get pumps involved. But that's something we should probably.
Yeah, we can visit once we're working through some things because we also were looking to further some discussion. We'll talk about it in a storm shelter opportunity for the.
This is actually before this thing.
Yeah, it was a heavy, just a heavy.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Committee meetings, I think you were about to.
Oh, yes. We did. We had an employee committee meeting. Led by mayor for the town as chair, of course. We discussed our performance evaluations and limited that later in the meeting, we set a time for our city managers, we put evaluations. We also got an update on our bulletin book and that's been reviewed by legal consultants. So let's see, I would have coming up. And we also just kind of chatted about the economic development going on right now, the growth and citing some side community.
Any other committee meetings?
Just in addition to that, the direction was to let it unfold these, the council procedure and conduct policy onto the attorney and that's, you know, we're going to be reviewing it. And we set a timeline of then, by the second meeting.
All right, next up is item seven. We're over various alerts this time. We have voucher claim list number one in the amount of $1,719,081.67. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to, for the public to understand the size of this first claim list does include the city's debt bonds in that total. So that's why you see a larger claims, those some maybe noticed.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, list number one is approved. Next, we have the library pre- pre-paved claims list in the amount of $681.55. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? It's been moved to the second end. Is there any discussion? Hearing them, all in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it is approved. Next, we have claims list number two in the amount of $51. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, claim list number two is approved. Next up is public comments and correspondence. And so first up is public comments. Anyone would like to make a public comment, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. And then you keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move then to city council, public comments and correspondence. Councilmember Martinez, anything from you? Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember. Okay. And Councilmember Dominguez is on Zoom with us, I think. Anything from you, Councilmember?
I have no comments, Mayor.
Right, thank you. Next up are comments from the city clerk, or from the city manager, excuse me.
The only comments, I just had visited with Councilmember Schultz. There had been some community members questioning about trees, wanting to know about replacement of trees due to the storm. And I know public works director Reinhard and Kirk and Rick, I'm IT director Nick Key have been in communications and talking about programs for tree replacements. So we will have some more information to bring for the community to, to see what we can do for tree replacement.
Comments from our city clerk?
I don't have any public comments, but I just want to give the reminder that I will be out at MPA Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week for my footprint.
All right, next up is new business. Item nine A, discussion and approval of appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty, Iowa on the presented voluntary annexation application and direction to the city clerk, 1489 Highway six. All of the addresses are in there, 1481 Highway six and 1475 Highway six. Process is discussion and then a motion and then consent to vote. So is there any discussion about these voluntary annexations that are part of your path?
Mr. Mayor, if I could proceed, I'd like to provide mayor council with more information for today. So Ken Brooks, we lead director and myself originally was presented an application on the, let me see here, I think it's the 1475 Highway six property. The furthest west property on the north side of Highway six in interest of voluntary annexation as a part of their expansion project. From there, further, we had conversations in addition with some other property owners on that. As you can remember, we trebly had annexed in early spring. And so along with that, now we have three current properties that would like to participate in 100% of voluntary annexation. So with that, we have been looking with Leo Foley, with me and Kay, talking about sanitary sewer expansion with some capital improvements for future expansion in that direction. And so what we're asking also here today is to accept the applications and then direct city clerk and city manager to start processes with engineers, legal attorneys and county and of those requirements to proceed with the process.
Any further discussion?
There's a couple of properties in that whole area and that doesn't necessarily mean anything to them, right?
Well.
Long as these are voluntary.
It will. So we do have a current property that has not, that is still along the fence, not certain. And that one is, if that individual chooses not to participate in an annexation, then Mr. Lips and I have reviewed, what we would have to do is go to the state level and petition for possibly an 80/20 annexation versus 100% annexation. So that could delay the furthest property to the west. Their timeline told that they're requesting for the volunteer. You know, but we'll continue to answer all questions and, you know, visit by the, the other parcels, we could go in and proceed with their 100% annexation. But it's, again, I'm hopeful that everybody will have questions resolved and we can bring those properties. And apparently right now it just leaves one property that's still unresolved. And apparently right now it just seems like one property that's still unresolved.
Is there a motion or is there further discussion? There are motion from the council to give the um city manager, city clerk, the ability to proceed with the negotiations. Um with the property owners, the attorneys. Um people involved with this process. Is there a second? It's been moved in second and um this is a consent vote, so all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Guys have it, uh it is approved. Item nine B. Uh and this uh is relating to voluntary annexation again on five point three five acres to. Am I saying it correctly, Gary?
You're.
Uh LLC. So first off is discussion. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? City manager.
Mister Mayor Council, um so we've been um another hundred percent voluntary annexation um application presented to. Um to look for um a directive for city clerk and city manager. Um this is. Most likely going to be a little bit different as this is residential. Um and there will be uh. Uh looking at attorney visitings for urban renewal. Um potential tax increment finance for a um sub development or subdivision and new developments. So um this one will have possibly a little bit different look to it, but again, this is just the. Just a motion requested from also to um accept the application and direct.
It was our motion to accept the um. Recommendation and to give permission to the city manager and city clerk to proceed with negotiations. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying, oh, is there? No, we had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Is there uh any days? Hearing that and how the motion is carried. Item um. Uh nine C, discussion and appropriate action on sewer backup and flooding at three O eight eighth third street. Um with a reimbursement request. This was part of the packet. Um so first off, is there any discussion regarding this matter?
So Mister Mayor, I was um contacted by the property owner at three O eight east third street. Um there in April um and communicated that they had a a backup in their basement. Um and uh reached out to superintendent Goodell and he provided a report. He had also provided you a little bit of what occurred with that. Um and due to that, um the property owners were were very good and patient with us. Um and. Reimbursement for the cost of the equipment that needed to be reclosed. Um I did reach out to the city's insurance company, but that amount is not deductible. And so if we were to receive more. Um of these claims, then we could look at it and advocate, but right now. Um we would just look to impact this way of fund for a reimbursement of those items.
And as a city clerk or a city, I don't know why I'm calling you that. Uh city manager pointed out, uh they're asking for the equipment cost. They did the labor to um. Uh restore um the situation uh and did not submit a bill to the city for that. Is there further discussion?
I think this is a situation that happened all the time. Not her most likely.
And I think and um I know the gentleman and they were very thorough. Um checking through and testing the water that it actually came back in. Um and if you have any questions, friend, but I mean that's their.
And both the city manager and. Superintendent have recommended for the by the council. Uh is there further discussion? Is there a motion to reimburse? I would make much material. Is there a second? Uh it's uh all those favors signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Yeah, I have it and reimbursement will occur. Item nine D, resolution twenty twenty-four zero six one eight hyphen one five seven. The resolution to accept an approved change order number one from DC Taylor Company. For roof panel replacements for the powerhouse removing um so. First of all, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there discussion?
I'm gonna turn it over to see.
So this is the one um we kind of talked about the last council meeting, but. As they're tearing off the top of the roof, they're finding areas that are. The panels where they have to screw into are basically rusted through. Uh the question councilwoman McCarron asked is why we couldn't see that from the bottom, being catered to with those plans together. But I will say, I did look at it when I was in there and it was very, very hard to tell. But once you go up top and tear it off, then you can go back down and kind of see light and see things, and it made it a lot easier. So I do think, and I know Cody looked very closely at all the panels that got replaced, I think. It was very wise to do it. This roof had been leaking for as long as I can remember. So I think they're doing a great job about um. The prices, the unit prices were put into the contract. Again, I didn't have anything to do with the contract, but they were in the contract when it was handed to us. They knew there could be these things there and they. They they said they had talked to one of the superintendents of the, I believe. I'm not sure which one it was, but they had talked to about the um. What they called, I didn't know what these were, the roof pitch pockets and what those are. As if you go look at that roof, there's a perfect wall that goes all the way around. And there's steel poles that go down through the roof, and they thought maybe they could get away without putting these. Actual pocket type things around them, but as they got there, they decided they needed to put them around to make sure it didn't leak. That's another area that could leak very much. That's what what was done, and I know it's a it's a big change order. It will be the last change order. The thirteen hundred, which is the biggest part, one point three. It was an estimate that um my inspector and 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 their field guide came up with originally. Um it looks like that's going to be a little bit higher than what the actual number is, but not a lot. It's going to be in between twelve and thirteen hundred. We put thirteen hundred on there just to cover us and. Hopefully it'll come in a little bit less than this, but that's it. So the next steps are, they finish. Then we have to get a warranty. We'll do some more testing. We've tested one part of it. We do lead testing, because in order to do their warranty, they have to do lead testing. And then um then they'll come in with a pay estimate and be paid.
I'd just like to add in all fairness to um Mister Foley and um those superintendents. Um at the electric plant and myself. Um there there had, there is a tran, there was a transition in this whole part of this process. And so there was a lot of. Potentially, there's a lot of information that we may have not been privy to um in some discussions. So again, as you work through these situations and. You know, like anybody, even on your own home, you start peeling back the layers, you know, surprise, you know, there's. More issues than what you have, but also just, again, these are those things that we're talking about is just to make sure we're tightening up our communication. And be a part of those things, so. Um I support the recommendation that engineers.
So I'm confused. Last. Council member. We had the uh the mayor pro temp, I think, questioned the thirty-one thousand on this. And then we had confusion on what the um. Resolution actually was calling for, we voted down the resolution. Um I left with the thought apparently wrong that we were going to get in for a cheaper amount than thirty-one thousand.
I was, I I didn't, I wasn't sure if that's what people thought, but what what had happened, that there was another. Change order that came in from DC Taylor. For about thirty thousand dollars, so it was a similar amount to, there's a, there was the um. Masonary wall that goes from one roof to the other roof, so it's about six foot high. And they were gonna put metal on that wall and cap it, because what was happening, water was coming down the wall and getting inside. That was separate from this. We didn't like that. We never presented that to you. We never even presented that to the city, because we kept. Tell DC Taylor we didn't like that plan and we were looking for other options. Again, it wasn't something they really wanted to do, I don't think. So Bogie jumped into the middle of it and. Asked if he could go and uh get another quote from a local contractor, and he did. And that quote was the seven thousand dollars versus thirty. So you did save some money. But it was separate, completely separate from this. And I probably should have said something, but. The way it was working, like they were voting this one down, so I thought.
Yes, and that is my accountability. Um I. I I became confused um with the conversations um. The the wall, the mason wall, um after further discussion with the electric superintendent. Um we have stated that that really is a building and grounds. Um project, because it's not the wall, or it's not the roof. It's actually the wall that, again, because of water damage, the wall was weakened and it has issues. But we are proceeding with that as a um an actual building and grounds repair to that wall. Um because it's not really a part of the the work project that we're in. And so that was the conversation that we had. So with. Like Morrison, um the one that you had seen at the previous meeting, that is the bid for the actual building and ground project. That will be looking to do. So we separated one.
It actually makes perfect sense, because the roofers. That wall wasn't their expertise, and it was very obvious to me that that was not their expertise. Their expertise is really. It did work out.
So then the confusion that I had tonight is that we have a a request for the thirty-one thousand for doing this. And then you said something at the end of your discussion on that about, at that point, the pay estimate will be.
Right, what I would tell you, if you haven't paid for any of this work yet. But you will be very shortly, because they're very close to getting done. Then their next step is, once they finish this work. Then they come back and they have to give us a warranty, which doesn't come from the roper, it comes from the supplier. But there's certain things the roper has to do to get that supplier warranty to be. To be valid. And we'll make sure they do that, then they come back in the past. So you're you're, if you if you approve the change order tonight. It gets included on their next pay. What I was trying to tell you is you're not, you haven't paid for any of this work.
Is there, is there discussions on the council? I've been asking the questions, apologies. All right, uh we have a motion, um and this is a roll call vote. The clerk will call the roll.
Martinez. Schultz.
Yes.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, next step is item uh nine E, resolution twenty twenty-four zero six. One eight hyphen one five eight, a resolution to approve pay estimate number thirteen. Uh for All American Concrete Incorporated for the Rainbow slash Maxon uh Street Improvement Project. Um so first of all, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Now we move to discussion. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote, clerk will call the roll.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Martinez. Motion passes three zero.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four zero six eighteen hyphen one five eight, a resolution to approve. And accept the final plat for the. IC. Thank you. Um. Subdivision located in West Liberty, Iowa five two seven seven six. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Been moved in second and is there a discussion?
Mister Mayor Council, this is your, as a part of the um. The development process um with IC, this is the the final plat. As it stated, um and it shows where the utilities. Um and I believe, have we done our final checklist?
I I don't know if the final checklist is a hundred percent done, but I believe it is. I know we did, they did the final walk through and it was really good. We're pretty pleased.
With the final plat, though, it just, it um it does provide where the. Um utilities and you'll see further in our agenda that was set up public carrier to um. For utility easement, um but this is my recommendation for council to. Approved, so then the city will then finalize the final with the town on the final.
Any other discussion? The roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Martinez. Motion passes three zero.
Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four zero six one eight hyphen one six zero. A resolution to destroy documents in city storage in accordance with resolution twenty twenty-one. Uh one zero four two zero hyphen one six. A resolution to adopt the um. Record retention manual for all Iowa cities. So someone's lost their sense of humor on this one. Um do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? Is there a discussion?
This is just continuing getting rid of the documents that have gone.
Further discussion? The roll call vote, clerk will call the roll.
Martinez. Schultz.
Yes.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Next up. Computer just moving on. Is uh resolution twenty twenty-four zero six one eight hyphen one six one. A resolution to remove the disposal and for. Remove for disposal of equipment stored in the West Liberty Police Garage. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
These are all items to do. That are basically just.
Council member Martinez, did you have the question that was asked? It's a question you had, okay. Right, is there any further discussion? Roll call. There it is, the clerk will call the roll.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Next up is a resolution, uh we're now to uh nine I, resolution twenty twenty-four zero six. One eight hyphen one six two, a resolution setting wages for the West Liberty Police Department. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Martinez. Most, motion passes three zero.
Next up is resolution twenty twenty-four zero six one eight hyphen one six three. A resolution to transfer funds for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Been moved in second and is there discussion?
Mister Mayor Council, so what you're seeing here is um a part of your June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-four ending budget. Um these are the budgeted transfers required in order to. Uh with the the revenue and expenses uh of those funds presented.
Is there further discussion? The roll call vote, clerk will call the roll.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Next up is uh, nine K, resolution twenty twenty four zero six one eight hyphen one six four, a resolution. To approve the payment. For ease, for easement to the common car wash for the Columbus Street sidewalk project. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there discussion?
Okay, so thi- this is one and. So we did a change order to the Rainbow, the Maxim project to do a sidewalk along Columbus Street. The two properties that don't, three properties that don't have sidewalk, the two that would have been impacted would be the. JB's Pub and the common, uh, the common. Car wash is an extraordinarily difficult spot for us to put a sidewalk in. So we, we, we didn't wanna put it because it's right on the curve of the highway, we didn't wanna put it too low. So we had to put it up pretty close to the property line, still on state property, so none of the sidewalk would be on his property. But it will close one of his bays for the month that we're working, we could do part half and then half again. But he had indicated that would be a big cost to him and. The city manager and I were negotiating with him and told him we would pay fifty percent, which comes up to be that twenty, sorry. Eight nine.
Two thousand nine hundred.
Two thousand nine hundred dollars and, and um, he still is not at all happy, but I think he realized a compromise had to be made, so. That's where we were at, to try to, try to come up with a compromise so we could allow All American to build this. Side of, none of the other. Um, property owners will be impacted like this, they, they'll be impacted because there's a sidewalk going in front of them. But they won't, they won't close their business for any part of time like that.
There are further discussion? Roll call vote, clerk will call the roll.
Right, Martinez.
Yeah.
Freeze it.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay, next up in under new businesses is item nine L, set a date for a public hearing. To vacate a sewer easement in the city of West Liberty on July second. At um, two thousand twenty four at seven thirty P M, so this would be an agenda item on a regular council meeting. Any discussion?
Mister Mayor Council, this is to go with the I C division with the utility.
Everyone is fine with it, okay. Then we'll move on to nine M, set a date for the city manager and city clerk evaluations. The week of July eighth hyphen twelve. And is this with the personnel committee? Or this is with the.
The entire council should, um, and we would just. Although we need to have a date. Would be in need of. Excuse me, very careful and look both ways, and you're crossing the street.
So I wanted to be gone that week. I'm sorry, councilmember, my second, I was like. Everybody be on vacation. Well, that kind of eliminates the week before, if you're on vacation then.
And your city manager is also out at training the week before, so the um, employee committee had said that the. Next available time would be that day.
When, when are the evaluations due?
June thirty.
So we're already past three, correct, two days before that. And during our play, maybe we did mention the importance of putting up that soon then later.
But sure, I mean, for the July fifteenth. We already had a council meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that you not do these information with the council. Tiny, you can definitely set them as a special meeting earlier in the evening.
Everyone else is available the week fifty eighth. I can join by Zoom.
So councilmember Schultz said that we do it as early as possible in that week. But possibly Monday that week.
And the time you suggest is.
I agree.
And you're gonna do them both at the same time back to that, is that correct? I mean, one and then do the other one directly after that.
Uh, councilmember Dominguez, does that work for you?
Yep, that works.
Five hours and six ain't bad, so, okay, we'll do that.
So Monday that week at five thirty.
All right, next step is um. Item ten, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion is there, is there a second? We're just farming, okay, follows in favor, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying or saying yes, aye.
Aye, aye.
Meeting gets adjourned.